Come on in between.
Did you get those agenda?
On to my. He had the pictures and I, and he just put an okay with the thumbs up. So. I told him between the workshop and the council meeting.
Last minute customer.
Could be.
Yeah.
Good too.
No, oh, there it is. Okay.
Called over this special meeting of the governing body of the city of Navasota, May twelfth at four thirty-one P M. Council chambers. Uh, we will, uh, dispense with item number two. And, uh, we have no remarks of visitors.
No, sir.
To item number four to conduct a workshop concerning speeding issue complaints and requesting speed bumps in Heritage Meadows.
Yes, Mayor and Council, as Chief Mize is coming forward, you'll recall that, uh, last couple of council meetings, we've had, uh, residents come to, uh, request some additional traffic enforcement and consideration for road humps, uh, in their subdivision. So Chief Mize is here tonight to give you a little, uh, recap on the enforcement, uh, efforts that they've had and what they have found so far in their, uh, data analysis.
Mayor of City Council, Mike Mize, Chief Police. Oh, yes, ever since we got the request for speed bumps and so forth, we, uh, placed our speed trailer in the Heritage Meadows area. I showed you, I gave you all each a packet. It's got the map, basically Heritage Meadows. And, um, the subdivision. So we did a month's study. Two main roads enter and exit the subdivision off of three seventy-nine Heritage Drive and Mockingbird Street, placed the speed trailer on each street for two weeks. The data is, um, I guess the fifth and fourth and fifth page. And it kind of shows, there's quite a few cars that do travel in and out. Uh, we can go over that just a little bit, but the March twenty-seventh, April thirteenth, the trailer was placed in Heritage Drive. And the trailer basically captured almost twenty-five hundred vehicles traveling in and out. Uh, the speed limit for the subdivision is twenty miles an hour. And so the totals, I didn't put the totals of anything below twenty-five, um, on here, but you can figure that out, but speeds, it predicted speeds of vehicles traveling over between twenty-five and thirty, four hundred and forty-five of the vehicles. And then vehicles going thirty miles an hour over total, just on that road was eighty-eight vehicles out of the twenty-five hundred. And then we even went down to our, uh, graphs and tried to find, okay, what if, we need all this data in order to put the traffic unit over there? And majority of the time it is during lunch, eleven A M. to two P M. Or four P M. to eleven P M. Those are our highest levels of any type of speeding over twenty-five miles an hour. Uh, so basically twenty-one percent of vehicles traveling on, um, Heritage Drive were found to be speeding on, on that. On the Mockingbird side, the one to the south, um, we changed it over from April fourteenth to April twenty-seventh, another two week stint. And it showed just about a little over fifteen hundred. So less vehicles traveling on that one. Same data on that one, anything over twenty-five miles an hour, we calculated speeding and that one did have, um, about two hundred, oh, two hundred and sixty-seven vehicles over twenty-five miles an hour. Comes out to about seventeen percent of the vehicles coming in and out were over twenty-five miles an hour. Same timeframe which we expected, the four P M. to eleven P M. and the lunchtime eleven A M. to two P M. So with that data, obviously, we needed that data to, just can't, you don't want to send officer there at a random time. And that's very useful tool of this trader that we got off the grant for this type of work. Um, accurate, really fast data, and we'd want to get at least two weeks out of it, just in that subdivision. Ever since the complaint started when we deployed it. So since then, just getting the data right back, we got to review it, put it out there. It spoke for our traffic unit. We did. Send them out there and told them, uh, between lunch and evening hours is the best time. Uh, they've been out there twice. The email I got back from the guys. They worked May ninth, um, just for about a one and a half hour stretch. They observed twenty vehicles and they did two traffic stops. One moving violation, which was, it was traveling twenty-seven miles an hour. So they went ahead and did a traffic stop on it. And then the other one was a registration sticker issue. So they were there. We know they were there because it was immediately posted on Facebook that the cops were present in Heritage Meadows. So it was well known. Word spread very quickly during the lunch hour. Um, but that's kind of just wanted to bring up the data that we received from our speed trailer and just kind of show that. Reason I did twenty-five miles an hour, all basically, uh, radars, uh, fluctuate one, uh, plus or minus three miles an hour on that end. So that's why, our calculates every five miles. So twenty to twenty-five, I kept that on the other end, just in case it was the plus or minus three. Pretty much all the data I have for there right now. So the traffic unit is, um, and they know, uh, our goal is to get them over there at least, try to, try to juggle, uh, lunch shift or an evening shift at least twice a week. I think once you get a couple of the citations, it's going to tremendously slow down, um, for the speeding side of things.
I don't want to ask about the, the ways in which you can patrol it, but is there a possibility of having somebody in an unmarked car that would run radar for, and then have a marked unit away from the area? Just thinking, if there, if there is a problem and this data appears that there is, um, a speeding.
Well, that one, that's, you seen the sign trailer, it's pretty visible that it's a police trailer. So they didn't slow down for that. So. But the way the officers, actually, they're using the lidar, which they can hide their car. Radars are generally forward and rear of the patrol car and they catching cars that way. But you see cars turning sideways, they really can't. And so, uh, but the lidar, actually, you can turn sideways, you can stand and, and it's a laser and it has a scope on where it goes. So they, they actually are going to use that. That's what they're assigned in the traffic unit. So they can park their car behind a house and walk out there and stand under a tree and just use lidar.
I mean, the goal is really just to slow people down, right? Not to.
Exactly. And so, and that goes kind of why the traffic unit is a marked unit versus a ghost unit. We're not there to catch and do that. We're there to deter their criminal activity, you know, ghosting units and all that. We're not trying to make money and do that. We're trying to show our presence, deter it. And that's why our traffic unit is marked up versus ghosted.
Uh, Mike, I know we got one, uh, I think one officer live over there because I see a car parked over there all the time. Is it? Is it in a sense of, of parking another vehicle, cop crawling the street just to be visible so they can slow down?
If we had a spare unit. We don't have a spare unit to do that, like a dummy car.
Yes.
We don't have any spare units. Ours are pretty much running twenty-four seven right now with the recalls. They're getting recalled in the shop quite often. But we do have, we have two officers that live over there right now. One, actually, one on each road.
Is there, i- is there a, a a big difference between the two streets and the back and front? That is the, the east end and the west end? Cause I noticed that, uh, the times that I've driven down there, uh, the southeast corner there, the Mockingbird out by the road, that block is marginally passable. Cause there's so many, so many vehicles out there.
Right, yeah. I, I, I don't know. I mean, how many cars they have. I think the Heritage is used a lot more entering and exiting because it's as you're coming from Washington Avenue and versus unless you're coming from three seventy-nine or twelve twenty-seven, that area. But I know most folks, obviously, with the data, most folks do use Heritage Drive to enter and drive down there. I've talked to several citizens and we kind of narrowing it down to which cars it actually is that are speeding a little bit more. But we didn't go down to the data, which we could if we wanted to go, it's going to take a lot more time to go down to identifying exactly which vehicle did was the speeding ones. But I think as a traffic unit gets in there, the, uh, the car is a lot easier to hide. Cause it's, it's marked, but from the front and back, it's not. So I know they'll be able to identify a lot. Uh, speed is a lot easier and hide in there.
The last time we had this problem, I think we attempted to solve it by putting the stop signs in. And I don't know that they did any good.
So, yeah, the stop signs, that's why I didn't draw the stop signs, but on both of them, there are stop signs going east and west on those two ones, which on the past several citations were issued for running stop signs or they not doing a complete stop, you do the roll through the stop sign. And that's a lot of small road, city vehicles doing everywhere. But that's where they're enforcing that today. I talked to another one because some of the data just showed Heritage and Mockingbird. I know we did a traffic enforcement. And one of the officers said he wrote three tickets within a couple of hours. Two for the stop signs, one for that, but their traffic stops were classified on like Wildflower Court and Meadow Lake because that's where the traffic stop ended. That's where they called in their current location at versus Heritage and Mockingbird.
So, so Mayor and Council, just, uh, kind of, uh, add some information to the, um, for the, for consideration. Uh, Chief has, uh, and I have discussed, and he's going to ask the, the traffic unit to kind of make some additional, make that into their rounds, get it, you know, going a little bit more, uh, more frequently be seen in the area, maybe get traffic calming achieved through enforcement or presence. Um, rather before we take a knee jerk reaction and put road humps, which are long term and ha- having been in cities that had those, generally, they result in a lot of complaints because they, people, you know, feel like they damaged their cars. Um, and then they want the city to be on the hook for damage to their cars, which we would not be. But again, it without trying to go that route and cause those issues that we know would inevitably come, we're going to try to achieve the results through, through some presence and enforcement.
I think this summer, once school ends, we're going to deploy the trailer again, just to get another updated times and stuff, because it, just in case it is maybe school aged, uh, it doesn't identify all that. It just literally tells us which vehicle and the speed that they're traveling. So we're going to redeploy it out probably in June and give the traffic unit, um, a couple of weeks to run their enforcement. And then we'll put the, uh, trailer back out again. Get some better data.
Do we have children that play signs down there on either one of those streets?
I'm not sure.
I think on Mockingbird, it may be Heritage. We, we have a Dell student over there on one of those streets.
Uh, yes, pretty close to that stop sign. Yeah, I didn't pay attention on that one to tell you. Yes or no? I just double checked all the stop signs and, uh, the speed limit signs and all that.
Well, I don't want to put too many signs down here because then there's all of them getting ignored.
Yeah.
Yeah, I drove, uh, over there this morning after I got to talking to, getting to, to you, Mike, uh, going down Mockingbird and, uh, what's the other name of the street? Heritage.
Heritage.
Both of them is very long, but it's only one stop sign because it's just one crossways. So, you know, if you put another stop sign up, you.
There's another stop sign out at the end of, uh, of Heritage.
But it's already a, a dead end there.
Right.
Straight down the street, it's just only one crossways.
Yeah, but there's a, there's a stop sign at the crosswalk, yeah, or the, the cross street at the end. So there's one in the middle and then there's one at the end. I don't know if there is coming up Mockingbird or not.
Yeah, there's only, because, because right when you enter, there's one row there run north and south and then the middle road. Uh, that's where the stop sign's at, little dip. And then at the very end, it's kind of where it forces you to turn. I think on Heritage is a couple of houses where dead ends at, but on Mockingbird, it makes you, makes you turn that way. So you gotta, you have to stop, slow down for that one right there.
What's the, what's the difference? I mean, I, I think I see it in my head, but the difference between a speed bump and a speed hump, is it the width of it?
Generally, those speed bumps are straight, uh, yes, the width and the height of that one where the speed hump is a lot wider and, uh, three, at least three foot, I think, wide.
Could we, could we ask that, um, developers, you know, think about those if there's a, I, I'm thinking about, I, I would imagine that there's kind of the same issue over at McCon Lakes, just with the straight roads. Uh, maybe there's not, but is that something that we could ask developers to think about?
Maybe better to, instead of that, do stripes, because stripes are flat and just makes a rough ride.
Yeah.
Well, well, the only, the only ones we have in town right now are All Santa Hills, right?
I know that one for sure. And I, Mark, talk earlier, I was thinking there was one other place that had them. It's Alan White does have, that's a public road.
Oh, okay.
And that one, that one does have it, but that, they were on there as a private road before they donate to the city. So they were already there. Pre, All Santa Hills was the one that we built and put in there. So I think those were the only two that I knew of.
When they put those in.
Yes, sir.
How effective have they been?
Well, it's right next to the school. So it's, it's, uh.
Yeah, that's.
Still speed. And the bad thing is when you do that, some people accelerate all the way to the next one and then they slow back down. It's they do have their pros and cons.
The guy living next to him is going to raise cane about him.
On my lawn.
Recommendation for standard transmissions.
They don't make those hardly anymore.
I think that, I think the actions you're taking are in the right direction.
I just want to be able to answer a question that I usually can't. So give, and then the data did come back right after the last council meeting, which we were, we literally were downloading it during the meeting to get some numbers up. And, uh, now that we had those numbers, we can be more proactive during the right times versus just you know, even though most, pretty much the officers have to patrol throughout different locations throughout their required, uh, tour of duty. But now that, that's the whole sole purpose of the traffic unit very beginning. We need a plan like this, they're going to be assigned to these specific locations, um, throughout their, their, um, tour of duty as well. So now this is the perfect example. They get to go out there.
Didn't have that until fairly recently.
Last, this twelve months, we started the traffic unit. So this is a perfect time for them to get there. And the first day, like I said, they were out there for less than an hour. It was, it was posted that they were out there for sure. And then they did two traffic stops. So more presence, uh, of course, once you're not there for a while, but that's why I think they're going to keep it up and or the citations will happen. And then that definitely usually deter people to slow down. If just the mere presence isn't.
Is there a way with that, uh, trailer and camera to be able to send letters to register vehicles?
So that was kind of the thing where, where the law came out, you know, the old, uh, red light cameras. Because that's only grabbing the registration of that. Cause it say like, you weren't borrowing my vehicle and then you ran the red light. I'm going to get that. That was a big argument on that end.
What if we put a toll tag system? That sends letters, right?
It does, to the rental.
And tags too.
Yeah.
Only pony tags.
Then they, they pulled all that stuff out. So this, this gave us the best thing that we can work with now is the narrowing it down out of twenty-four hours we're down to. And it actually, I got a lot tighter. I just threw the, uh, four to eleven to get more numbers out there. But if you actually look at that chart, I think I wrote kind of, well, it's hard, probably you don't see the highlighting part on there, but I believe it's number four and number six. I hand wrote Heritage and Mockingbird on top with a pen versus the marker. And then the next one does too. Um, I don't know, it came out black and white, but the orange part or the top part, that would be evening times after twelve P M. And then the blue would be, uh, midnight to noon. Majority, pretty much all the speeding, if you had to put numbers on it, it's going to come in the afternoon or right at the lunchtime. And then right when you're getting off of work, four to six, four to seven. That's why I want to put it out one more time after school and then we can maybe narrow down. Is this more school age versus non?
Do some counterintelligence work and send out a bunch of fake messages and the police are out there, watch out.
Yep. Always post it on there. Uh, I showed him earlier. But I can keep it up on this, like, you know, in another month, I can bring some data and show how many stops were made. In a month or so, and just do that under a staff update or something, I think, be easy.
Yeah.
Quick that way. But I just want to come on this one to answer the questions and see what y'all's thoughts were and, or suggestions on what else to do or which I wanted us to do.
Yeah, I think if the presence is working or will work, um, I think when I was in Stone Ridge, everybody wanted speed bumps.
Yeah, I know.
And it's, it, it just, as the more we thought about it, the more it was like, uh, is this really going to be more helpful than not helpful? When kids riding their little scooters down the road, they're going to have to stop at them too.
Or do wheelies and.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, different people respond differently to the, the speed bumps. The speed bumps are you buy them. I think where they're designed to not impede you too much if you're going at the speed limit. Uh, but a lot of people just can't do, can't get that concept in mind. So they go up to the speed bump and stop.
Slow down really, really slow.
And then bump over and bump over it and then they take off again. So uh, they impede the traffic more than just calm it.
Yeah, I would say if you don't see a change in a month or so, and you know where we need to go. Go to whatever the next thing is though.
Like I said, we'll, uh, right after the first la- well, it's the last week of May is, and then we'll deploy it again over there and then give it a month. But I'll be able to give an update of just tra- uh, traffic unit presence. And then we'll get the data again and see if there's anything been changed since the, the presence of the month. So I'm not there.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Five and five is workshop on the East Side Water Plant and Altamira Infrastructure.
Yes, Mayor and Council, uh, Matthew Julian is going to come up and, uh, kind of go through where we were, where we have been, where we are today and kind of the plan for the East Side uh, utilities in general, specifically water. But, but he'll talk about a little bit of everything for that, uh, East Side infrastructure uh, as he goes through it.
I provided copies of this PowerPoint presentation. So if you don't want to turn around or you want to take some notes, I have.
Okay, so I am Matthew Julian. I am Public Works Project Manager. And I'm here to present for the water plant and what's been going on. With me, I have, uh, Public Works Director Jennifer Reina. We've been working on this together. In the back, Charlie from Lee, no, he moved to the front. Charlie from Economic Development is here. We worked on some numbers on projected revenues for this project. And I've also got people from Blal Engineering to answer technical questions that I may not know the answer to. So okay, so a quick recap of oh, this way. The light works, but the, there we go. Okay. So this is the basic design that we currently have of our water system. We use wells to pump groundwater to our water plant. We're in a disinfected and stored in ground storage tanks. From there at the plant, the water is pumped using booster pumps throughout the wa- the distribution system. And takes it to elevated storage tanks. The elevated storage tanks are what we use to provide water pressure throughout the entire system and extra storage for demand. So currently we have six groundwater wells. We can do two thousand two hundred and eighty-five gallons per minute. We currently have two ground storage tanks totaling one point five million gallons of storage. We have three booster pumps that are fifteen hundred gallons per minute each. And then we have two elevated tanks that are total of six hundred fifty thousand gallons of storage in the system. Currently, we have right at three thousand five hundred and thirty-four active meters in the system. So we are pretty much at capacity. So in order to take on more growth, we need to do some growth in our system. We'll go to the next one. Okay. So this is the current map of Navasota. The yellow circle is our E T J, which just basically keeps College Station from growing on top of us and surrounding us like many cities around Houston have experienced. The, uh, little pink area in the middle is our city limits. In the past, most of our growth is taking place on the west side of town. As you can see, this area right here, a lot of growth there. So for future developments, our west side is getting close to capacity. We're blocked by the Navasota River on the west side and the north side. And then on the south side down here, all this belongs to, uh, G N W Water Company. They have the rights to serve water south of, of town. So the only really place we could grow is the east side of town. My next slide. So while we were looking at the, the growth, we were presented with this Altamira subdivision. And this is what they were projecting, bringing to Navasota. So the, the property is ninety-six acres. They've got a total of thirteen phases that they want to develop. Eleven of those will be residential, single family houses. And they have two phases that are going to be commercial. In the beginning, they said they would bring three hundred and eighty-two houses to that subdivision. When they first wanted to incorporate, they wanted to be a part of the city and have city utilities. And so in order to do that, we needed to, they needed to touch the city limits to be annexed in. So the city did purchase, uh, property to be able to connect to Altamira. And as you can see in the, the map before, they've already been annexed into the city. So this is the property that they're proposing to us. Uh, up here is the, uh, Navasota Lifestyle Auction. Here's the road to the fairgrounds and all this property here is Altamira, where they want to build. This area in the red circle is property that they are willing to give to the city in Navasota to build basically a, a system to provide more water. So you can see here, uh, this area is the backside of Doug Crossing and city purchased property here to connect it. And it has already been annexed into the city. This is a mockup of what the. Essential completion of Altamira will look like, all thirteen phases. And then the property in phase ten on the south corner is property they've given to the city to build. Six, our water plant. This on the next page is a chart that uh Mr. Stutz put together for me. This is a basically year by year breakdown of projected revenue for the development out there. So in order to supply them with utilities. With the three hundred eighty two homes that they were projecting, uh, T C Q standard says one point five gallons per minute per connection. So we would have to have five hundred seventy three gallons per minute to give them enough water. And then based off the standards, about twelve hundred gallons per day in sewer. And we're still working on numbers for the gas, how much gas they wouldn't eat. So then go to the next slide. So this slide is discussing everything that Altamira is going to do. To extend the utilities that we currently have out to their subdivision. So from Highway ninety, the the gas line will be extended about where citizens and state bank bank is. It will travel on the south side of. Highway ninety till it gets out of town and then it actually jumps across to the north side and it will go all the way into the subdivision. Uh, for sewer, they are going to have all their sewer collected into one lift station at Altamira and they're going to pump that sewer to a manhole. Right across from the, I think it's right across from the track. So all this has to be done before they can build phase one. Their plans also show a future water line, which we'll get to in just a minute. The uh, the water tower that we were planning to build out there. Is eventually going to tie back into to our current water system to give us more connections. And that is part of the agreements. They they're gonna have to run that pipe back into town. This is a hard to read, but this is the the map of the actual extensions. We got the gas on top and then the sewer is on the bottom. And then the gas will actually come all the way down to the back and into our water plant where we will have a generator for power failures. Okay, so once all that was discussed, we had to figure out how to get water out there. So this next concept we're calling Plan A. This is what we were told to go ahead and make it happen. So this is what we were proposing to do to get water out there. So this right here, this is the water well we're calling well number eight. And so we were gonna put the well there and we were gonna, we were planning on piping the water straight to the tower. And the tower is gonna feed the whole subdivision. Once that was done. We were gonna drill another well out there and then at that time we were gonna build the ground storage tanks. And then we were gonna install booster pumps and the booster pumps would fill the tower, which would. Feed the the system and eventually feed back into town. So we started with the water well, we call it well number eight. We took bids, we awarded the bid on April twenty eighth, April twenty second, twenty twenty four. The uh contract amount was originally one point four million. Uh, it got dropped down to one point. Two oh eight and we'll discuss that in just a second. The water well is in production. It's gonna be done this month. And you can see what we've spent so far on that water well. So while we started drilling and we got to about four hundred ten feet and then we found a pocket of water. That had very poor water quality and we decided that it was not good to use that water. So we drilled down to seven hundred fifty feet. We found good water there. But indicators showed that we wouldn't get a lot of production out of that. Pocket. So then we made the decision to drill all the way down to twelve hundred where we found the next pocket of water. But we started seeing a higher salt content of that water and a higher temperature. So at that time, we realized that we probably gonna have to stick with the seven hundred fifty foot well. Go to the next slide. So at that point, we kind of met with everybody and they said, just proceed, continue on. So we we told them, go ahead and we'll do the well at seven hundred fifty feet. And then while we were doing that, we were also getting ready for the elevator storage tank. So once this well is done, we're only gonna get a hundred fifty gallons per minute out of it, which is only gonna be able to serve about a hundred houses. And we were told to keep on going. So we believe that that will serve phase one and two of Altamira and give us time to figure out the next move. So we realized then that a future well was gonna be needed sooner than we realized. So the we we bid the elevator tank at the same time. We awarded that contract April twenty third, twenty twenty four. We decided to go with a seven hundred fifty thousand gallon tank. Because of the number of connections and the idea that it would it would feed back into town would allow us to. Allow more growth on our current system. So we've already done the foundation work. Uh, they're scheduled to. Show up at the end of this month to start doing some of the framework, structure work on the steel tank. And they're still looking at being done by October twenty twenty five. And you can see what we've spent so far to date on that storage tank. This is just a picture of the tank of what what it's gonna look like. And uh, we we talked about maybe doing a a five hundred thousand gallon tank, but we. Why build this tank and then in twenty years have to build another one? So if we went ahead and upsized it now, it would it would serve all of our needs for future growth for a long time. So we're gonna have a seven fifty thousand gallon tank. The pipe size leaving that's gonna be a twenty four. And then if once it gets subdivision, they're gonna drop it down to a sixteen. And that's the one that they're gonna run back into town. So future plans show that connected to our system. Because of the the level of the the ground out there at Altamira, it'll be in a different pressure plane, so we will have to in. Include some pressure valves along Highway six just to keep the other system from being overtaken and flooded with this water. But it will more than double the space of our existing system and provide a lot of additional connections. Okay, so we were already halfway into this when we realized that Plan A wasn't gonna work. Again, we were told to just proceed, keep keep working. So now we're coming to.
Uh, you you keep saying that you was told to keep proceeding. By who?
Our our boss. That was something that the city manager at that time said, we need to keep pursuing this.
So do you have a, do you have an answer to why council never was notified?
I do not. This was all done, but like this, this is, this predates my position as project manager, so I wasn't really included on the day to day of this.
Jennifer, do you know why council never was notified?
I don't, I don't know.
Did anyone on the council know this was happening?
I was aware that the well was not gonna be big enough. And that there was gonna have to be something done in the future. I mean. I I thought that was communicated to everybody.
No.
I I had.
Not to me. Okay.
Part of the issue that we had with the water, because there wasn't that many wells in that area to get information off of. And we just assumed that since, you know, Seaforce had plenty of water, maybe we'd get lucky and we'd get a good five hundred gallon per minute well and that did not happen. So again, we're told just, you know, keep going.
Who, gonna interrupt you again? I'm sorry. Who was the company that we hired to drill on that site? There was a young lady, I think, that was here that gave us.
So we've been contacting with Liz with R W R. W Harden was bid as the engineering consultant we used. They have a lot of background in wa- groundwater, so we use them. So Plan B, you can go to the next slide. So this is the revised copy of what the what the plant's gonna look like. We got rid of well number nine. We had to get rid of the ground storage tanks, but we still needed all the components to connect the well. To the elevated tank, all the electrical, the plumbing, piping. Uh, gas for the generator, uh, disinfection for the chlorine. Go to the next slide. So this is everything that that's gonna be needed. Electrical, panel boxes, power, that includes emergency backup generator. Uh, we were planning on using the natural gas generator. That way we'll have fuel twenty four seven in case of a power outage. We'll have generator up and running. The water line that'll connect the well to the tower, the water line. That will feed the chlorine into the tower, that four inch gas line extension from where Altamira stopped. And we haven't, we've not awarded a bid for that yet. That's everything we are up up till now. This shows everything that we will have to have to keep moving forward after all this is done. Somewhere we gotta find a water well number nine. Obviously, we cannot use the Altamira property. There's just not good water there. So we'll have to find an alternate source and find a way to get. The water from that well. To the water tower that's already there.
When you said we can't use the water there, so that well number eight is just useless?
No, so well number eight is usable. It's just not gonna suffice more than the two phases of the subdivision.
It's only a hundred homes, you said.
Yeah, about a hundred homes. So once you do the first two phases, we're gonna be at capacity.
Did they give a time? Did Altamira give a timeline on when phase one and two was gonna be? Complete?
So I, so we did have a meeting. I was I was gonna let him get through and then I was gonna go in. We did have a meeting with Altamira uh on Thursday that I'm gonna kind of give you guys a a little bit of a recap. Uh, on as soon as we he gets through going through this part.
But as of now, they're still doing preliminary plating. They've had to change their design. Uh, Tech Star didn't like the way their roads were laid out and said one could not be used for safety reasons, so they had to go back to drawing board and redesign that. So once the well's done, we gotta figure out how to get the water to. The water tower and that water has to be treated. So looking at probably another plant for that water well. And then the sixteen inch water main has to be extended at some point. Uh, we were trying to get a timeline on that from Altamira, but we have not gotten anything as far as what phase they're going to extend that sixteen inch line. And then at some point, we need to run another gas line out there. The one that they're that they're gonna run is gonna be enough to get by. The our concern is if something happens on Highway ninety and the gas gets hit, every house out there is going down. Without having that secondary feed. So the idea was using that land we purchased from Dove Crossing to do an easement. And run utilities up there and eventually possibly that second water plant and run that gas line and and do a true two way feed to that subdivision. And the 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 what we're thinking is the success of Altamira will actually. Produce more growth between Altamira and Navasota and possibly on the other side. That's that's where Navasota is gonna grow. Navasota is growing. So that's where we're trying to figure out how to serve water to them. Uh, should be all I have. I don't think any questions you haven't asked yet or?
Yeah, so I think about a month ago you talked about the uh smell coming from the water. And you were saying that it was uh. It's not sulfur.
Yeah, there's a high iron level in the water, not not above uh T C Q parameters, but high enough that it's. Could, you know, stain porcelain and, you know, make some dirty, some red water. Uh, I discussed that with Liz from Harden and she says that, you know, when a water pocket isn't used, the iron level can be high. Through the development and through the use of the well, you will see that iron level come down. Also, the introduction of the chlorine will help oxidize some of that iron as well. So she expects that level to go down just from using the well, but it's no, it's nowhere, there's no uh secondary contaminant levels that say it's gonna have any harmful. Issues, anything to to your body. It's just gonna be unpleasant to look at and.
But I just, if it goes into the well smelling and then comes up and goes in the storage tank with a smell, does that mean it's going into your house with the same smell? And the reason I ask that is my stepmother lives on some property that's got a really bad sulfur smell.
Yes.
While the water is water, it's not fun to take a shower or, you know, pressure feet.
So the iron won't affect the smell of the water. You may you may smell a little, you know, a little bit of it, but it's not not like the sulfur is. It's just some like really hard water. So every house out there will probably need some kind of softening filtration system.
That would be really no different than the calcium that we have. We already have hard water.
We have hard moderately hard water right now as it is.
Will we buy, will we build anything? Can we go buy some water out of ninety seven?
Like bottled water or? We have, we we've considered maybe purchasing water and we can look into that. And the only person that has a good enough well is Chuck Norris. So that that is an option we can look at.
Sound like we're underwater on all of this out there right now.
Well, we seem to have a problem out there. The. Montgomery, I think, is is been on notice uh. Uh, no new developments for the hundred and eight, hundred and eighty day moratorium since. What, twenty twenty three or something like that? Now Conroe's on a hundred and eighty day moratorium. So they're all in that same quadrant that from us anyway, it's a southeast quadrant.
Yeah.
Uh, so we're competing with all of them. Where's the water gonna come from? How far away are we gonna have to go on this?
That's our next step is trying to figure that out.
It seems to me that we were briefed a couple of years ago when the hydrologist came and said there were what, two or three aquifers out there? I have a question on rating these these aquifers. Is. The T C Q requires a certain. A volume to be pumped. And they uh. I forgot what I was gonna say. Uh. The the volume is dependent on two things. One is the. Uh, mechanicals that you put in there that they're rated at being able to pump a certain amount. But the other thing that's more concerned to me is the, I guess, what you call it, the recharge rate. For the aquifer, that how much can you take out of this aquifer without just sucking it dry?
Yeah. I know that's something that the Water Development Board looks at and the Blue Bottom Groundwater Conservation District will. They, I know, I know, uh, Water Development Board has already come and taken samples this year of our wells. And they'll measure the depths of of the aquifers and they'll, you know, they'll take the samples and have them analyzed too. So as far as how much we can take without it being an issue, that's not something I can answer.
What happened to uh all of the tests that we did prior to to digging a well that? I think when the lady come in, she presented this to us. I asked, what if we don't find any water? Oh, yeah, there's plenty of water there and everything. Now we come to. I'm gonna say we first were talking about. Five thousand plus home and serving all the commercial areas out there now. Now we're just talking about one hundred resident home and. I mean, it's just like that uh. Everybody pushing the buck off on somebody else. We need to owe somebody accountable. You know, we're spending taxpayers' money and uh. It's not a blank check here.
Yeah.
Well, she made it clear when she was here that there were no guarantees.
Yeah.
We knew it was a risk.
But at what point, uh. I know that, listen to what you're saying. You're putting all the the burden on the previous administration. But somebody dropped the ball here. Council should have been notified and we could have capped the well and walked off for a minute. If we're not, we're spending too much money out there now, in my opinion. I mean, uh, I feel like, and I'm not talking for the council, I'm talking for James. Uh, do do we have some kind of insurance that we could file to recuperate some of this money? Because we just spent millions out there. There's no return. File to recuperate some of this money? Uh, because we just spent millions out there, there's no return. Jennifer? I mean, it just seemed like that we just go and do something and when something happened, everybody looking at everybody. I mean, somebody needs to be held accountable.
So that, um, I'll use that as a segue into the conversation we've had with the developer uh, out there at Altamira. Um, we did, he's not here, is he, right? Okay, um, I was gonna let him come up and answer any questions you might have. Um, so we did have a a conversation with the uh, with the developer on on Thursday. Um, and and basically just just made it clear to him that the the city has invested. As much as the city needs to invest in prospecting for new residents. It is unfair to our current residents for us to continue to invest that kind of capital. Uh, into a potential developing community. Um, encouraged him that we will look for ways um, for him to be reimbursed. If he wants to build uh, a, a small water plant to serve a hundred homes. And make use of that well number eight in the interim uh, until we have um, a reasonable. Um. Expectation that the growth justifies us to drill a well number nine and and do another uh, plant. But for us to prospect for a a development particularly of this size. Uh, ri- I mean, we've already spent, as you just said, over a million dollars on well number eight. If we were to do a plant, we expect that to be right at another million dollars for a hundred homes. A hundred homes. Don't generate free and clear money over and above the operational expense of operating that water plant. You're talking about a few dollars a month per home. To reimburse us two million dollars in investment. The rea- the ROI just doesn't make sense. And there's, it doesn't make sense for us to do it. It really probably doesn't make sense for the developer to do it unless they can roll it into. Uh, some of their other expenses or they can get reimbursed through their P I D. Um, that you all have have entertained uh, for them or potentially through the T R S uh, that you've created. Uh, and so they are looking, their their engineer and the developers are looking at options to see uh, what might make sense for them. And I I have, I'm pretty confident that they will come back with options that we will then consider and it will be discussed. We will come back here. Um, but my suggestion or recommendation from my seat now is. We've, we've spent enough of the taxpayers' money. Uh, let's, let's hold right where we're at. Let's let the developer come and be the partner that they suggest they want to be for this community and let them pull some money out of their wallet.
I agree to that.
I didn't mean that to be a downer for the whole.
But did you, did you have an idea on when the first and second?
So they, they were hoping to have lots on the ground this year. Um, but. Without us spending another million dollars on a water plant, there's no way of treating that water. Uh, so it's not usable until you treat it. Um, so that's why I encourage them to, if they want to do that and they want to move at that pace, then they need to, they need to front that money. Otherwise. They're gonna have to wait until it makes sense for us to do that. Um, meaning we've got other growth coming that the ROI just makes sense for that kind of investment uh, out of our funds. We, we've got infrastructure that needs attention, that needs repair, repairs and maintenance and it's not. I just don't feel like it's appropriate for us to continue to divert funds away from that for a new, a new area.
So did he somewhat talk like he wanted to work something out?
He, he, and he indicated that he was gonna go back and talk to his investors. Um, and and the early feedback that I've been given is that they're, they're, they're looking at options. Their engineer reached out over the weekend. Asking a couple of questions and I've answered and told him that, yes, we would absolutely uh. Talk to them more and and look for options that make sense. And so I, I do feel like they're doing their due diligence now to. Find a path to get this thing to success.
So can we really say, all right, we're gonna just hold off on anything on well number nine and just wait? That's, that's, doesn't cause any problems with anything else?
Well, there, there is, we do still, aside from the Altamira project. Um, I don't know all the details and I don't know anyone came right and I, I don't want to get off of what's agenda tonight. I see the lawyer kind of looking at me. Uh, um, but we do have some other um. Issues with regard to our current capacity for the number of connections that we have. Um, a- and so I think we do need uh, to continue at least with the elevated storage tank. Um, and start with, without much money, we can start looking for a location for well number nine and looking at options.
In, in the future, it may make more sense to build one plant and then pump well eight to to that plant because. The further away we are with the plant, the more people we can serve with that line going to Altamira, not just at Altamira.
Right.
So that's something we look at.
And I think I heard you say that once it, once eight and nine are done, that we can put that tower back into the system. To help provide pressure as a whole.
Yeah, so at this time, they will be two separate water systems underneath our our permit. And then the, the plan the whole time was to make them one big plant. So even the wells that are feeding. This tower will still help our current system that we have, once it's all linked together.
Okay, I, I think for me, that is different than what I have been told for the entirety of the project. For me, I, I feel like I was told that, no, it would not, would not help the other areas once that tower got out. Only when it gets tied in.
So when it, when it gets tied back in, we're gonna see pressure increases around the high school, around Annie's, up and down the feeder road. It's probably where we're gonna see the, the more pressure in the system. And once, once we put the pressure valves in, it's just gonna help from overloading the current system, but they're gonna work together.
I hate to talk about the north side of town, but I feel like the north side is saying that there's not enough pressure now. So are you saying that potentially it could help with the pressure for Stone Ridge Phase Two? After it gets tied in?
I don't think that's gonna help phase two of Stone Ridge. We are looking at that with developers now and how we can make that feasible. But I don't see it being a, an, uh, because Stone Ridge is the highest point in town we have. So it's their, the closer you are to the height of the water tower, the less pressure you're gonna have. So we are, we are also looking at phase two of Stone Ridge before they decide to build. We gotta figure that out.
Do we have any indication of on that adjoining property to the north or to the east? That was looking at like what, thousand homes going in there and putting in the mud and all that kind of stuff? Do we have any?
I've, I've asked uh, Lupe to get me in touch with that developer. I plan on having a meeting.
I don't know that, that might be something to just kind of keep in mind. I don't, I don't know.
We, we, yep, that's the, that's the, that's kind of the plan.
I think that was part of the idea of making city limits out there because it would, it would then touch city limits and we could have some.
I mean, we could.
Ability to make the man exit in.
Partner up or something.
Well, and, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll.
I just don't know.
We'll find a path to entice them. That makes sense for everyone.
I think the only other question that I have is really more of a comment, but I feel like you're, you're suggesting that we do a loop for the gas. Make sure to write that down somewhere.
Okay.
Everybody is familiar with what that means.
That's, right there, run secondary gas, yeah.
See it, yeah, see it here, but I'm just saying that if somebody else's needs to be responsible, yes, make sure they are aware. Okay.
On the water situation. This is a continuing problem in the state as we tend to have more drought type weather. So even with a. Even aside from the Altamira type thing, we're gonna have to seek other sources of water over the. The coming years. Uh, some of it may not always be groundwater.
Yeah.
And so we, we need to be open to that, whether we're talking about gray water or just total recycling of the water. Or coming up with service water.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
Thanks for that. That was very informative. Thank you.
One, one other question here. Uh, with the three thousand five hundred and thirty four meters, that's actually how many? Meters that we have connected in the city?
That is. At that time, you know, it fluctuates every day, but that's about how many meters are currently on the billing system that get, that are getting charged water every day.
This is with eco-commercial also?
Yes, this is uh, single residential, commercial and multifamily.
Okay, so the, the reason that I'm asking the questions, I guess we can convert this back to the structure that we have in the city also. Because each structure have their own.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm having a couple of meters.
Yeah, yeah, it's not exact one to one, but pretty close.
Yeah.
We'll get you pretty close.
Think we have over two hundred and eighty commercial meters, give or take it. That's off the top of my head, but yeah, we. Most of them are single family.
All right, thank you.
All right.